One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, bless our planning commission members. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen. We have roll call, please?
Absolutely. Tracy?
Here.
Kevin?
Present.
Dennis?
Here.
Nick?
Present.
Rick? Brian is absent. Oh, Andrea?
Here.
Thank you.
Has everyone had time to review the minutes for the June 12th, 24 Planning Commission meeting?
Yes.
Any additions, corrections, changes?
I just have one question for the planner. Kevin and I did that site visit out to the solar energy farms out in LaPierre for DTE. And we wrote up a site plan review. Should that be attached to the minutes, given that we discussed it under board discussion at the end? And it's going to be on the August agenda as a record?
Yes, we can add that.
Just as an attachment to the minutes? Is that... Have we done that before, Ida?
It's always up to the planning commission as to what's attached. Like your letter from Armada should be attached to the minutes, any correspondence.
Okay. Yes. Does anyone have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of June 12th as presented.
I will second that.
All moved and supported. Any discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, correspondence. So we have our Michigan planner zoning reform stories. Then there's the events on the back. If anyone's interested in going to the conference, I highly recommend the Planning Michigan Conference. This year it's being held in Grand Rapids. There are just countless classes every day, different types of things. You can sign up for whatever pertains to your township or city. It's great. It's put on. It's a big conference and there's planners from all over Michigan attending. Okay, and pipeline emergency response. All right. Any public comment? Does anyone want to speak about anything that is not on the agenda? Okay. Any late agenda items? Nope. Okay, introduction, no public hearing, new business. All right, we'll start off with old business. Special land use 24-01, SMJ International Veronic Communication Tower at 3600 Glover Road. Okay, do we have somebody from the company here? Hello?
Hi, Aaron Adelman from SMJ International. On behalf of Vertical Bridge.
All right. Has everyone had a chance to review the plans and the correspondence from our engineer and our planner? Okay. So I did speak to Corey from Davis Land Surveying and he said that everything that he needed to have done was done. And he was, he has no concerns. And then next up will be our planner, Alex.
Sorry I was late. I woke up this morning and it was October already, so between the flooding, the detours.
Oh, yeah.
True story. Yeah. So everyone saw my letter that I provided to planning commission regarding some of the comments. Now the applicant provided some comments themselves. So some of the questions left over from the information requirements is kind of determined by the planning commission to determine if they feel that some of the information provided for the cell tower use is sufficient. So I know the last meeting, the comment was that the barbed wire was being considered for a waiver. That the parking requirements may be waived by the planning commission as well. The applicant has obviously provided a green belt landscaping, provided on sheet L1. And the other requirement being that I'm still uncertain regarding the co-location of other cell providers. Noting that on the cover sheet of the site plan, there is noting that it's for Verizon. So I know the applicants here may perhaps address some of those questions. But from a planning and zoning perspective, a lot of the questions have been answered by the applicant. Or I believe the planning commission is intending to potentially waive some of those requirements. However, the other aspect is, of course, is it's a special land use. So considering that, you know, some of the qualitative aspects of the special land use are being met by the applicant, the use, the location, et cetera. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Who would like to start? Dennis?
You guys did a bang up job on this.
Thank you. I hope.
You got the engineering report, you got the Verizon co-location, or no, they looked at the other site, the Dick Stein Tower.
The Stein Tower.
Here's to me that from the motion of the last meeting we had on this, that would have been April of 2024. The letter, the engineering letter, the collapsed data, if I remember right, was like, and this is, this is all the information that we have on other towers. You addressed the wind speed, the load factors, the collapse, and indicated, your engineer indicated it would collapse within a 65 feet. Therefore, it wouldn't violate property lines. Obviously, any kind of major destruction would be subject to everybody having a problem.
Sure.
So that looked pretty good to me, 65 foot radius. Do you have a co-location letter that addresses allowing co-location on the tower?
I just, my issue is, I understand that, just the site plan, the plans provided for record. And maybe Ida could clarify this. Generally speaking, you want to have that all, the plans submitted for record. So just because record keeping can get sometimes a little funny, you just want to make sure everything's in one place at one time. So if there is an amendment to request that the site plan provide a co-location on it.
So you're citing the first page, Alex?
Yeah, I just, I'm not certain if co-location, and you could tell me if it clearly states that they're allowing for co-location. I know the letter states that, but then if the letter is separated from the site plan, when the plan's provided, that can sometimes get a little tricky. So.
Yeah, they will allow future collocators. It isn't called out on the cover letter, but on page TE1 of the drawings, it shows the profile view of the tower. And it shows that 235 feet and 220 feet are available heights for future collocators when that need arises. We could add a note to the cover, the township so requested.
You're citing, what sheet was it on?
TE1.
So it looks like there's two Verizon wireless and then two future. Is that correct, four?
You know what, I don't have the drawings in front of me.
Oh.
Let me see if I, I didn't know that Verizon would need two, but I do know that there will be two future, for two future carriers.
Okay.
I can confirm that.
It's nice to see a letter from Verizon identifying their engineer looking at the tower about a mile away or so. And explaining why that was not an adequate tower to relocate, or for them to relocate there. Very clearly done. I'm just trying to address the motion that was made to answer the questions of April. Okay, you addressed all the issues that the township engineer raised relative to the pages that were missing from the previous in the April supplemental.
Yes, sir. Those are added back in our recent mail.
Clarify the collapsed data. The email covers the county drain easement. Clearly, they did not, they told you that a permit was not recovered from it.
We spoke with, sorry, yeah, we spoke with Joe Summa and Christine Cummings and they both indicated that we were good to go.
And I think back to Alex's point, I believe before we waived the requirement to allow the barbed wire to top of the fence.
Yes, yes, correct.
And one of the drawings I found did identify parking space.
Parking is called out on the recent set on page C3. There's a parking space at the start of the access road and then additional turnaround space down at the end.
Addressed all the issues from the April meeting for the motion.
I agree with that. Rick, do you have anything?
Don't, Dennis pretty much covered it.
Okay, Kevin? All right. Tracy? Nick? All right. Thank you so much. This was a lot to do and you've come before us three times, so.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this agenda?
My name is Frank Berenek.
Yes.
Hello? I approve what they're doing. I'm the owner of the property.
Oh.
I just want to confirm that to let you know that I am here. All righty? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Did you want to speak? I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Howard.
Howard, okay.
Howard Redd. I own the property adjacent to it. And for the life of me, I can't see why this committee wants to take ag land and residential land and make it special use land. That location is right in the middle of all resident and agricultural. There's no, there's nothing around there like it except down the road, which Verizon says they can't use it. But there's plenty to build up on Van Dyke. There's another tower right behind my business on Van Dyke. And that doesn't belong out in the middle of the country. People don't want it there. And I don't know why you would consider rezoning that. That's spot zoning. And spot zoning out there is just to me not called for. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments? So, so we are not actually rezoning, we're not spot zoning, we're just putting a special land use. I just want to clarify that. Okay.
I'll move to approve the special land use application 2401 for SMJ International, Vertical Bridge, and Verizon for a wireless communication tower at 3600 Glover Road, Elmont, Michigan, as it meets the four standards A through D, Article 5, Section 5.3 of the Elmont Township Zoning Ordinance 39.22.
I will second Mr. Swears' motion.
All right. It's been moved and supported. Any board discussion? Okay, could we have roll call, please?
Dennis?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Rick?
No.
Nick?
Yes.
Tracy? Andrea?
Yes. Motion carries. All right, on to our review of our draft master plan. Oh. Yes. All right. We'll move on to our site plan approval. So would anyone like to make a motion to approve the site plan?
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan.
Okay, support? It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Okay, could we have roll call, please?
Just in the motion, please, know what parts you're waiving, as we discussed earlier.
Oh, okay.
This motion. Our wire.
Yep.
Do you want to review that? Would you like to review all the information first before roll call?
Yes, so. Kevin, would you like to add on to the barbed wire waiver?
Yes, I'm sorry. I apologize. Looking for the email, so I can.
Which one? Alex?
The one from.
Alex?
Alex, I got it here. I make a motion to approve the site plan with the following amendments. We waive the barbed wire restriction as it pertains to the security features of the fence.
I think that's the only one.
The parking space and all the stuff.
Yeah, everything was on there.
Do you want to note the co-location being on the cover page?
Yeah, and I add that the co-locations not on the cover page are located on TE1.
Support. Okay, moved and supported. Any discussion? Go ahead.
Yeah. I believe the review is provided by the planner and engineer dated on drawings that are 5/18/2024. And dates for what were the specific.
You're correct, the revision date on the drawing, on drawing.
Looking for the date here.
June 13th, 2024. Oh, that's received date.
It's received date. 5/18/24.
5/18/24, I'm not seeing it down.
It's on the, right down here.
Yeah.
The most current revision.
It's on Corey's letter as well, Kevin?
These aren't working, so. I apologize.
It's very hard to read.
Yeah. There it is, I see it now, 5/18/24. It's vertical. I wasn't looking for a vertical column. Okay.
Okay, could we have roll call, please?
Kevin?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Madam Chairman. We will have to have him stamped and approved, so I have two sets here.
Okay.
So after the meeting, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our review of our draft master plan and the revisions.
Bigger copy. Just the copies for the.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
I don't know if it says the maps, but.
Is that different than what?
I love maps.
Existing land use draft and the future land use draft that we talked about? I have this one too. I didn't put one on there. Um. So as you can see, what we have is a draft, future land use map and draft existing land use map. To speak about the draft existing land use map, we did go back and used the tax identification codes and made sure that all the parcels had a specific use to them. So agricultural, residential, commercial, industrial, and vacant. This map really shouldn't be a surprise. It's just that the colors are maybe a little more accurate in terms of what's used for planning and zoning purposes. I guess if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer about the draft existing land use.
Well, I guess I do have a question. Maybe I didn't, on the, oh, okay, no, I'm sorry. You went with the tax identification code.
As opposed to directed from the last meeting.
Yeah.
For the purpose of just knowing what's going on out there right now.
Okay.
For the draft future land use map, as noted from the last meeting, we use the, a lot of the zoning map, the current zoning map, to determine future land use. As you can see, this is a, essentially a one-for-one copy of that map as your future land use. I will note that I would recommend that the planning commission consider some parcels to be potentially used in the future for perhaps a commercial or industrial use. Just so that there would be an opportunity for future development that would meet the demands of the community going forward. I don't think necessarily it has to be overly burdensome or multiple parcels, perhaps maybe some key strategic parcels. Just that if, you know, if someone wanted to actually have a rezoning of their property in the future, they would have to go through considerable amount of documentation and public hearings to make some of those changes. So if you look at your existing.
Alex, I'm sorry, I need to interrupt you for just a moment. I have to make sure, was it two no's and four yeses? Or was it three yeses and three no's for the special land use roll call? I'm sorry, everyone, because if it was three and three, it failed. If it's four and two, it passed.
Can you clarify your response?
It was yes.
It was yes? Okay. Okay.
Yeah, Tracy and I were the no's.
Okay. All right, I just want to make sure. Thank you. Okay, go on. I was going through this and I thought, oh no, it was three and three. And I made the wrong call. Sorry, everyone.
So I think it'd be, it'd be wise to focus perhaps on Van Dyke, perhaps to the north, where there is a significant amount of, you know, commercial and industrial uses in that area. If any of the intersections would lend themselves to that, I'm not really sure. It's up to the planning commission. My only concern is perhaps, you know, you've locked in your uses and that's all there is to be for, until you amend your future land use map. As a future land use map is one of the criteria for any rezoning going forward. So we've done that, but I think just maybe one or two parcels are somewhere where you think the next property would be, you know, a good place for some sort of commercial or industrial activity.
So what does everyone think? Do we want more commercial office up Van Dyke or leave it agres like it is and keep what's here?
Say that again, Kevin. Probably the only industrial business owner here I'm for. Speaking from a business standpoint. I agree with Alex.
I agree too, and I think it helps with some of the tax base as well. And if you can keep it contained on the corridor somewhere.
I think it makes sense.
I mean, you don't want it on the middle of.
I do agree.
But.
No, but I think, you know, one of the major concerns people had, well, you know, paying so much in taxes because you're not carrying, because you're carrying all the burden.
Everything.
You know, you've got people with five acre parcels. It's, the population is so sparse, that's what you're going to get. So you either allow some of this industrial, commercial, all up through the Van Dyke corridor or not, but bear the consequences of that.
Probably the only place it makes sense is the Van Dyke corridor.
Yeah. Same moreover by Blakes wouldn't.
Even, I agree, a commercial district.
Especially more commercial than industrial.
A commercial district down through the area where Blakes is on both sides of the road makes a little more sense.
When you're closer to that R1 anyways, it's a little more dense populated and you get some, you know.
Exactly.
Shopping centers, medical office.
We're in a medical desert right now.
And we are.
Anything we can do to get some growth there?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
One thing I think the planning commission has to remember is that we are on well and septic, which limits the kind of development, medical especially, on a septic would be a really hard sell to the health department possibly. I know that this was discussed before and I thought the discussion was that due to. I thought the discussion was that due to the amount of industrial and commercial property that's vacant out there, you didn't want to increase it at this time. I know it's a future thing, but if someone were to come to this, you know, the township and say, well, I see this little corner down here on Boardman and Van Dyke zone commercial, so I want that commercial and what are you going to put there? It's well and septic, can't get a gas station, can't get a seven eleven quickie store. It really limits what you can do. I'm just saying, I'm not opposed to it, I'm not against it. I'm just saying you have to remember what we have. We don't have the infrastructure that the village has. Even the village is having trouble selling their properties that are zoned commercial and industrial. And right now with interest rates the way they are, it is a hard sell. But, you know, this is a future land map, so. But it's when somebody comes to us, you know, we used to say you have to have a shovel ready project. We're just not going to rezone it to rezone it so you can resell it at a higher price. So it's a lot of things that you have to think about and especially what is the what is the view for people driving into Elmont? Do you want to see a lot of little stores or do you want to see farmland? Houses, you know, it depends on what your view was.
Thank you.
So I, just to comment on that, I fall back on what we talked about last meeting with the well and septic. If some of the future is to run some water and sewer, I think this should follow that same path if running water sewer, and I know it's not a thing, you know, we can't say for sure it's going to happen. If that's a goal, then that could help with the hurdles for the medical or the bigger industrial that needs, you know, water sewer. Well, if one of the goals is trying to get it, then this should correlate with that. If we don't let it, water and sewer is never going to run down, you know, Glover Road.
Right.
It's going to run down Van Dyke. And so I think that should.
And that depends a lot on what the village is doing. Are they going to extend services or is the township going to create these services? And I don't know.
I remember the battles on the other side of it.
Yeah, yeah, it's it's. You want it, you want the best for this community, but, you know, it's like the future land is future. And you can say, well, yeah, it's future, but we're not ready for that yet because we don't have the infrastructure or or they just don't have a plan. They just want to rezone it so they can get more money when they sell it. And I guess it's, and we have commercial on the east side that's been there for ten years and hasn't moved. But that's that's south of the village that I'm not talking north, I'm talking south.
It's a chicken egg thing. You're not going to, you're not going to get the water and sewer moved off bottom dead center until you start proposing some growth into that direction. Or get some interest in that direction. And if the if the land use map locks out the ability to develop that area, it'll never happen.
How often can we update our our future land use map? Can we do it as often as we want? So if we do something or we don't do something, we can change it anytime we want. Okay?
There's just a suggestion, just maybe one or two that you have some here that say commercial, particularly north of Dryden on Van Dyke that are pretty much a solid block of commercial. There's a parcel here on the future land use map that is not commercial. That could be one, but, you know, if there's anything, it could be the time, so.
Adam Chairman, there's also something I noticed. You have a red block here between Tub Springs and Dryden. North of that is an S L U, or not an S L U, a P U D. So you you've got quite a lot of acreage there that is available for development.
Dryden Road all the way to Paul's Collision is P U D.
Plan unit development.
So the gray industrial off of Tub Springs?
No, no.
Dryden and Van Dyke.
Oh.
Dryden and Van Dyke minus the Little Cox Farm or Huff Farmhouse on the corner.
Okay.
Minus that, that whole section.
It's P U D?
It's P U D.
Some of it was converted to commercial for Paul's Collision.
So south of Dryden along Van Dyke.
West side.
On the west side, there's two parcels at Little Square, that long.
Little Square is that old farmhouse.
Right, and the next one below that.
Yes.
So that's all P U D?
P U D.
So then we'll just change the future land use map to include P U D there.
Okay.
And then one other question I have on the future land use map. So the parcel just north of Habib's Storage currently is industrial, and I know that they mentioned at their hearing that the north property was future land use industrial. And on this draft, future use, you have it ag res.
Say that again one more time, sorry.
So north of Dryden Road on the west side,
Yep.
there's the red commercial on the corner.
Yeah.
Then there's the industrial where Habib's putting storage. That next parcel north on the previous future land use map, when they were at their hearing for the storage, they had mentioned that on the future use map it was industrial. But I see now on the draft future use, you have it as ag res between industrial. So you have all industrial on the west side between Dryden Road and Hollow Court.
I was actually going to ask that.
Okay.
I was thinking for bringing it up.
I just, yeah, that one little parcel there.
No, that was, that was definitely going to be something I was going to ask, because that's not.
I would think industrial.
Is it industrial, Ada?
According to the zone, according to the zoning map, it's currently ag residential.
But they mentioned though that our future land use map was.
Yeah, that should be, I didn't bring my bag with me.
Right.
It should be the existing.
But it it makes sense to put it into industrial because you have industrial to the north and industrial to the south.
So speaking of that corner, because I did want to talk about that, the future land use map at Dryden and Van Dyke in the northwest corner, so a little spot of red there for commercial.
Long skinny lot, that long skinny?
It's a little square.
The five acre parcel is owned by Dr. Markham.
Oh, Dr. Markham, yeah.
Industrial use of the storage facility is that gray L shaped lot, right? Is that right?
Yes.
That's what Nick was just talking about.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, the next one to the north of that.
Yeah, that long, long skinny lot.
Right, the long skinny one is just vacant.
Just vacant.
Vacant agricultural. That's why we had all the that's why we had all the sorry, all the requirements for screening and, you know, all that stuff that we had for the applicant.
Right.
Right. The draft existing land use, so on the existing land use map, that's gray. That same parcel is gray and the.
Oh, existing.
It should be flipped.
It should be flipped where where the existing map, that's going to, that should be gray where the storage facility goes and the one to north should be ag?
Yes. Yes, where it's green on the F L U, it should be gray and where it's gray on the existing, it should be green.
Yeah.
So what is the opposition to the parcel just west of the storage being commercial, not industrial? If we're looking for a little bit here and there.
It's already got houses on it.
Is it? I thought it was, I thought there was that little piece before the houses.
I'm pretty sure there's a house right next to it.
I thought there was that, I thought there was a gap there. Split that. And then drive around and look at the lots.
Yeah, I think the storage is going to back right up.
To the houses. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that's all I have, that's exactly what I want to talk about in terms of potential and just making sure we had that accurate on the existing and future land use map. But other than that, for me, it would just be putting this in the draft, updating the existing land use analysis chapter. But we could just go over that at perhaps the public hearing. That would just be simply changing the figures in terms of how much is actually used for single family as opposed to agricultural and so on and so forth.
So the other, the other piece on the, on the future land use map is the, the road commission garage that's marked as ag residential now.
Where is that at?
Webster Road.
Yeah, Webster Road.
Webster?
On the existing, it's marked as industrial.
So Webster, Webster at the very top?
Yeah, Webster, west of Van Dyke.
That's the road commission.
Right, so.
Kind of that Tennessee shaped.
It's not that, so the future land use map, they can continue to operate in perpetuity, but if that were to change over, the idea would be it's not going to be industrial, you guys could use it for ag or you could, you could, it will continue to be a road commission quasi-public industrial type use or whatever the designation is now. Because on the zoning map, if I recall, we talked about this last meeting.
On the zoning map, it's ag residential.
It's ag residential. So I know it's being used for this type of industrial purpose, but you guys didn't want to make that a random spot for industrial type use going forward for the changeover. It would have a low intensity use going forward, if something were to change.
Other one is the, on the existing land use map, and this is probably because it's based off the tax, but for some reason, there's a big block of industrial on the north side of Cochrane Road. Did I say that right, Tracy?
Where, Rick?
Then where Cochrane Road, did I say that right, Tracy?
Oh, Cochran.
Yeah, just, just west of Mackey Road.
That's the new subdivision, isn't it?
That's where Sal put in the Daisy Lane.
Daisy Lane.
Yeah, it's never, it's never been industrial, right? It was farmland before that, or vacant.
This one down here at the, at the bottom of it?
Kind of right though.
Yeah, kind of over on the.
Oh, that would matter. So that should be, what, agricultural or single family or?
Was it ag res?
Yeah.
It was ag res, so I think the intent was the.
Yeah, it would be ag, it would be ag res.
Okay.
Like green?
Yeah.
So it's correct on the future map.
For some reason, it's being taxed industrial, I'm not sure why.
Well, on the gray block on east of Van Dyke, south of Huff, which is the Bristol pit, that is industrial as well.
It's in the gray, isn't it?
What's that? It's, it's gray. I'm not sure why it's gray.
Are you looking at?
Bristol's pit, existing. Yeah, Bristol's pit.
Yeah, so, Rick, just to be clear, like sometimes there are these discrepancies because county record keeping and assessing of what they're being taxed for sometimes does have errors. It could be as simple as someone putting the wrong code in and this comes up. So and that's fine, I mean, I could, I can make that change on that map. But it's, you know, we're trying to, the idea is we're trying to give at least a ninety seven percent accuracy in terms of what's being taxed and used for. Sometimes you will have these odd properties or odd pieces that need to be, you know, maybe changed over in terms of what their existing uses. We're talking about the one, the south end of, on the south end, yeah. So that would be ag, Rick?
I, well, it's a, it's a pit right, it's a pit right now that's finishing completion and then they're going to build like luxury homes around it. It's already zoned, we already zoned it.
Right, but, but the existing use is a pit still, right?
Still zoned ag residential.
Sorry?
Yeah, it's still zoned ag residential. Because we have two other pits that are.
I understand, it may be zoned ag residential, but a, a mining operation can exist in an ag residential. But the actual use is industrial, so that's why it's showing up gray on there.
Right, but the other two pits are green.
Are they still being used as a?
Yes, they're both active.
Which ones are those?
Measles pit at the corner, Tub Spring and Kitter. And then the new one off of Van Dyke.
Oh, that one right there? So that should be industrial too? Okay.
I guess there's, the problem is when you, you referenced the tax classification for this drawing, for that map. Then we have the Lapeer County zoning map, which is different.
Well, no, no, it's not the Lapeer County zoning map. So.
This is the one that was.
That's, that's the, that's the township zoning map.
Right.
Right, so existing land use is just trying to figure out what's going on out there right now. And to get as accurate as we can without walking out there and looking at it ourselves, we use tax identification code to determine what's going on all those parcels.
So that's my question. Should that be noted on here is why, why these things look the way they do is because it's the tax identification. So we know how it was referenced, five years from now when we look at this, how do we come up with that?
Yeah, well, yeah, I could make that note in there, that's.
I like that, yeah.
Yeah, so that's kind of, it's, it's either that or you go out there and look and survey it, right?
We've done it, let's move on.
So, right, but, you know, even if you have existing land use, it's just an inventory of what's going on. It has really no power. The one that has power is the zoning map that you have of what they can use for right now. And then the other, the other part, the other part of that is your future land use map.
Right.
So that's really what's really important to focus here is your future land use map. And we noted already in that we want to match much of, if not entirely, the current zoning map to be the future land use so that we have, going forward, the proposed uses will be that of what has been rezoned. And so you can always make changes to your future land use map and people can come in and petition to be rezoned and that would change your zoning map. So yeah.
So going back to Rick's point, the other pit on Kitter and Tub Spring, that should be industrial.
But Kitter and Tub, Tub.
Currently.
Yes, that, in the existing land use, that should probably be industrial, yeah.
Yeah, except for the yellow on the corner, that's the, that's the cemetery.
Yeah. And sometimes, so cemeteries, existing land use, generally speaking, cemeteries can, do occur in residential districts.
Yeah.
So that's the reason why the county would have seen or just noted as residential. Yeah.
White residence.
People live there real quiet.
Yeah.
The third pit would be on the bottom part of the page, so south of Huff Road.
South of Blake's. It's Blake's, Blake's is listed as industrial, but it's not. Not there though.
And what, what's the parcel there south, I believe, what Huff, H U, H O U G H Road? Along Van Dyke, there's a white box there, existing land use. Is that township owned or?
It's right in front of
I'm not sure where that.
That's right in front of Bristol's.
What's that?
The white block on existing land use. Right in front of Sal's pit.
Yeah.
That that one's blank and so is that one's blank and so is the one that was rezoned for Sal for Abeeb's commercial deal. For the storage, that's white as well.
Yeah, we're gonna change that to um.
So is the is the future map right for that spot, Nick?
I would think so.
I would think so too.
Yeah, on the future.
Yeah, for the one, that bottom one, the bottom square. Yeah, I I believe that would be ag as well.
It's the white.
Yeah.
I got one more question, Alex. The future land use map. We talked about P U D. South of Dryden. West of Van Dyke. And north of the commercial, which I think would be Paul's Collision there.
Do we designate that a different color then?
Yeah, I would create it.
Okay, that, okay. With the exception of the old farmhouse. Is that?
It's a separate parcel.
It's a separate parcel.
So the that one on the corner there is not the old farmhouse, isn't P U D?
No, that's its own.
Okay.
Would you would you would you?
Would everyone consider that corner to be possibly commercial then? Future land?
Or part of P U D?
Or part of the P U D? I I don't think Abeeb has any plans for it, but you know, future.
He does, vacant.
Well, he doesn't want another gas station there. I know that.
I I think either you think either one would be.
Yeah, I agree with Nick, either one.
Well, there's commercial on the north end. So if you had commercial on the south end, I'm just asking.
It's one of the main intersections with a light.
Thai food restaurant would be great.
Agreed.
Wouldn't be bad.
Thai food. Could be split use, Thai food, Chinese.
So if anybody's listening.
So the future land use map would put P U D there at that corner, southwest corner of Dryden and and uh and Van Dyke, both of those, the farmhouse and that large parcel. And then would north of the proposed lot for um the storage facility, that long rectangle, would we do industrial for that too?
I would think so.
Okay, all right.
It's never gonna build a house in here.
It's industrial on the existing map.
Both sides.
Right.
Yeah, it is.
Great. Looks really good, Alex. Thank you.
So we're gonna make that whole area P U D? Is that what we're everybody agreed to?
Those two parcels.
Yeah, with this old farmhouse.
Yeah, so from the commercial all the way to Dryden Road.
Right?
Is there anything else you need us to cover for the master plan?
No, that's it. I'm just gonna go back to the office and yell at somebody to get something done and um come back with something.
What's the next step then, Alex?
Um play the Lotto. No, um honestly, the next step is just I'm just gonna put this in the map, create um make the changes to the existing land use analysis chapter. That was early on um with, you know, different percentages because we're identifying more residential than ag. And that doesn't change anything. We're just noting what existing uses are. And so I'll make those changes in the map and you guys can see um pretty much a completed report next month.
That would put us in a public hearing in September or what?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Adam Chairman?
Yes.
Who's gonna send out the letters? Is that I don't know if that's part of your contract.
Yeah, I I mean, I could, it's, you know, if you guys, we can do that for sure.
Okay, thank you. All right, very good. That's very exciting.
Yeah, so what we can do is we would have, you could do, hold a hearing next month, look at the draft and then circulate that around for review by the county and communities for comment. And then um and then that'll go up to the board for review after that. And I could send an email memo on those steps.
So a hearing in August or September?
We would you would um let me get back to you on that exactly. You have to put a notice out, but.
I just knew we said September when then you said next month.
Well, no, because it's not just so you guys would hear it, make a recommendation, go to the township board. Township board can assume responsibility or make comments and kick it back to you either to make changes or to assume responsibility to make the final hearing. In a nutshell, it's pretty much it.
That sounds great.
Public hearing being part of the regular planning commission meeting? Well, it is.
Yeah.
Just they'll advertise it in the paper, put it online, let people know we're having it so that if they want to talk about it, comment.
Just like when we do a site plan. Or special land use.
Special land use or rezoning or tax amendment. Just different timeframe, just a little longer, that's all.
All right, that's great. All right, anything else, Alex? You good?
No, guys. Good to see you again.
Yeah.
Time's flying by.
Okay, Cory doesn't have anything to report. Tracy, Z B A, anything to report?
Well, next month we have a meeting on the twenty second.
Okay.
What do you got?
What do I have? I said I will next month.
Hi, what is it, partner?
It's a temporary use structure. There was a house fire on Shoemaker and the insurance company is requesting that they be allowed to put a temporary structure so the family can live there while they're gutting the house and fixing it up.
That's one of the things that got brought up by Roberta. You guys got the email Dennis sent out about about that.
Ida, do you remember why we changed that? It was before I was on the board, but I remember the conversation.
I think it had something to do with um a change in the law. Um the Z B A only is allowed to do temporary structures. Every other you know, emergency temporary, and this is considered an emergency.
I thought it was. I thought it was also a part in the fact that the Z B A could act quicker.
And we still have to have the fifteen day notice. We still have to go through the procedure. So yes, but this is quicker.
What Rick is referring to, Roberta asked during the board meeting Monday night, if Rick and I would look at the planning commission or temporary structures. However, it falls under Z B A, not planning.
According to your zoning, yeah, according to Article ten, ten point three or four, five, yeah, it it requires the zoning board of appeals to review those applications.
What I think Roberta was getting at was to expedite that because the house fire was two weeks ago and.
Well, as it turns out, by the time they held their meeting on the twenty second, the unit can be there on the twenty fourth. So it works out for them.
Yeah, I think that your question was, I would have to like that and I don't believe it's a planning commission action because it falls under Z B A under the under the ordinance. That's what I told the board. They didn't, the only people that got that was the board.
Ah.
And Andrea, because it wasn't a planning commission issue.
Oh, okay.
Got you. So it only went, my message only went to the board members and Andrea.
Okay.
I can share it with the board members, planning commission members if you want.
Sure, okay. Yeah.
I appreciate that they got the meeting together so quickly to help everyone and help this family. So if there's anything anyone could do.
Oh, thank goodness that Lapeer has a Sunday paper.
Goodness. All right. All right, so go ahead.
You don't have anything in your table of uses that allows for temporary structures? Those are assumptions that you probably have in your table of uses, a temporary structure. And then just the duration, how long that can last for, is what I'm assuming. I don't know anything about it since I've heard of it, but yet are they putting up a trailer or what are they putting up?
It's supposed to be a double wide.
Right.
Um and they'll hook up to the subject and well that's on the property. Um and the approval is good for one year with, I believe it's another six month extension.
I'm not sure why it's a zoning.
It's just in our zoning ordinance, so.
That's what it says. It asks you, is it E B A?
Uh huh. Yeah, Article ten.
Right.
Yep, section five. And um because I I was looking for something myself and that's where it came up. Says the zoning board of appeals may grant approval on a temporary dwelling as a result of fire or other force of nature provided a surety bond or cash equal to one percent of the construction cost of the principal dwelling has been obtained to cover the cost of removal of the temporary dwelling.
There you go.
All right.
Interesting.
Well, maybe when we go through the zoning book, we can.
That'd be so much fun.
My eye is twitching. Okay. All right, Ida, zoning and building report?
Um for um, let's see, this August, all I have is master plan. But I did receive today part of an application for reliable compactor over there on Van Dyke for their rebuilding their addition building. So I'm it's sitting there waiting for the check. So when I get that, then it'll be processed.
That's good. All right.
Plan just to rebuild the portion that blew down or?
Uh the by the looks of it, there's they've got a couple of little more things like a trunk well and some other little things that they want to put on, so.
Okay, planning commission general comments.
The only other thing that we talked about before they called this the channel was the solar energy. To discuss that and whether or not we wanted to look at the change and they're doing anything to our ordinance for August.
I'll put that on the August agenda. Solar?
Was there anything decided at the state level for this?
All there is is just the pending law that takes effect in November. So the difference being now make this very, very clear because I've worked with somebody who works here with you guys in some capacity, not the staff, of course, or other officials, but there's a clear difference between fifty megawatts and over and fifty megawatts and under. Fifty megawatts and over goes to the state. And you can follow that ironically, under fifty megawatts is under local zoning ordinance. So although you do not have one, if someone were to come in front of you, you would still have to hear it and um find a way to develop a process that is, you know, equal protection for the applicant and for the community, right? Um if it's and so there's things that you guys could, you know, require of them to do. Of the fifty megawatts and over, the large scale ones, um there's far less things that you can actually manage or allow or, you know, disallow, I guess, essentially. So um it's a very, very, very interesting way the law is written. It's unlike any other planning and zoning related type law um that I've ever heard of having studied planning and zoning education in in profession. So um what I would say would be it would be good to look at a potential draft ordinance either now or after the master plan, considering that you do have um high tension power tension lines, you know, running through the township. And um I think a lot of people are just kind of waiting and seeing to see what happens. There is a potential that it could get, you know, you know, um it can be, you know, removed from law, but the reality is is we live in a world of hypotheticals don't really matter. It's already been passed, so it's it's likely to take effect. However, the state's ability to take in applications um would be it's not really clear as how that would work. That could be problematic for, but um yeah, it looks like you know, you it's hard to say no to uh solar. It's just a matter of, you know, making sure that it properly fits with your community. So screening and things like that are pretty important. Unless you really want to get in depth on that, I could come back with more in-depth detail of how that would work on either side for for large scale and small scale. So for a small scale, for instance, you could say it's gotta be a hundred feet back, set back. But ironically, for a large scale project, I think state statutes has it as thirty feet, right? So you can only screen, you can you can only require certain screening and certain things like that. So um yeah.
The the one in Lapeer is under fifty megawatts and it's probably nearly three hundred acres.
Right, but but it's it was.
All under acres.
Well, right, but the one in Lapeer did take did occur far, well, before all of this, you know, a new law occurred and it was kind of a joint effort and um so it's a little different, yeah.
I guess I'm I'm not sure whether our ordinance is adequate as rule right now.
Not really.
I know. That's that's what I keep bringing up and don't seem to be getting anywhere.
Let's let's add that to our agenda for the next meeting.
What would our expectations be?
What would, yeah. And if you have any other smaller communities our size that already have ordinances, would you be able to get send them to us?
Um I could, I'll I'll send you, I can provide a memo of what you guys want to look at.
Yeah, that's perfect.
I deal with a lot of solar.
Okay.
Because I think the thing that I saw D T E represented is very sensitive to was water drainage.
Sure.
The uh the noise coming from the inverters.
Yeah.
The setback of screening, the fence is dictated by another agency. If I remember right, Kevin, depending on the power.
Right.
Fence is either four foot or six feet.
Sure, about how much, right. So that's the thing. It's 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 so different than anything else that we have because it's 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 like two sets of rules. If you're fifty megawatts and over, you're the big dogs, then the state's gonna let you do whatever. If you're the small operator or small parcel, whatever it may be, then it kind of falls in your lap and then the rules are a little different. And then obviously, there's the rules. There's also if you have it, you know, right now, if you get it before this whole state law kicks in, there's financial incentives, which I've never heard of up until now.
That facility is forty eight megawatts and it'll serve eleven thousand homes. I don't consider that small.
No, no, I don't consider it small. What I'm just saying, when I'm pointing out to that facility you guys toured is that all took place well before the state law came into effect. And it was, you know, the city, the city of Lapeer and and then we're trying to do something and and this is what the result was, right? Um so now long story short, people are so anti-solar for so long that the state said, well, if you're gonna do that, then we're not gonna let you really do much about it. It's just kind of like any public utility, they'll have special laws that that supersede local zoning. And that's what's kind of happened. So the small projects kind of fall in your purview, the big projects won't to only a certain extent, which you can, you know, look at screening and certain things. But there isn't a whole lot on that side. So it's just really odd. It's so I just think of similar use, but two different sets of rules.
I was impressed with and I didn't I didn't find that facility to be overly intrusive into a residential area.
Sure, but I I'm just making the point that for you guys locally, your township to, you know, have an ordinance in place and when you're managing, you know, applicant coming in, there's a couple of things to consider. Yeah, I don't know, Kevin. But yes, D T did say they want it to be a good neighbor.
Like I said.
Like I said in, in our report, DTE goes above and beyond their requirements. Uh, several degrees above and beyond. They could be some really obnoxious neighbors if they wanted to be.
Yeah.
And they, they felt that it was their duty to be good stewards and to create the green belts and to create the, um, a, almost appearance that the thing doesn't even exist.
The noise centered in the middle of the-
Yeah, the noise and everything, I mean, they've, but, and I, and I don't know that we have, other than down by our current substation, any areas that are even conducive to bringing in solar, because we don't have a, a, you know, large main branches of, of power going across the township to distribute. I mean, unless you're, unless you're s- backing it up to one of the industrial areas along Van Dyke, I don't see it even being, um, hosed for decades.
I would think of that. Malberg's Farm on Huff Road and Kitter. At the corner, Tom Gray's place, but north of that, across from Drakeshire, I would think that would be very appealing to them, because it's right, I mean, they already brought the power across.
That, that would be the only place that it would even be relevant, I think, um.
That's clear, it's clear all the way to Van Dyke.
So there's another township up in, um, up in Genesee County, or no, Chiawassee County, that I'm going to on Monday night for a hearing, and it's a massive DTE facility, I mean, huge, absolutely enormous. And so, um, you know, DTs provide that they're gonna pay for all the engineering, planning, all the fees, everything to, that's, it wouldn't be a burdensome to the township. Um, and they've provided all kinds of documentation and, I mean, like hundreds of pages of, of what they're doing to do and how they're gonna mitigate stuff, so it's still, it's a very, very long reviewing process, but, um, but, you know, it's, it's multi, multi-parcels, we're talking about dozens of parcels that are part of this, um, project, so.
But it would be feasible that some company other than DTE would propose a solar energy farm?
Certainly.
And I, I agree with Kevin, DTE went out of their way to be not intrusive into-
Right, there's other folks.
Another company might not do that.
Right, and other folks who have neighbors in Lapeer County who, you know, are different, not DTE, you're right, so I think we can, we can talk about that, yeah.
Okay.
All right, perfect. All right, Nick, anything? Tracy? Rick? Kevin? All right, all right, thank you, Alex, for everything, and we'll be looking forward to finishing up the master plan.
And the other thing is the Mash, uh, Michigan Association Planning State Conference is in late October in Grand Rapids, so it's not as far and, um, earlier in the year than October, so if you guys are interested. And then I think in one year or two year time, no, next year, I think, the national planning conference is coming to Detroit, so so just kinda pin that for yourselves.
I would do a turn.
Support.
Support.
Hey, so, so eight thirteen.